Raymore City Council Meeting. We have a roll call to confirm a quorum.
Councilmember Abdellgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Boehner.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg, absent. Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Piffo.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Westco.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
Present. We do have a quorum. Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any presentations and award this evening, but we do have a personal appearance. Mr. Doorman, are you here? You'll come forward. And let's see, you're from the Raypek Optimists Club and making a presentation this evening.
Yes, I am. Thank you for having me. My name is Mike Doorman. I'm the current president of the Raymore Peculiar Sunrise Optimists Club. One of the purposes of the Optimists Club is to inspire respect for law. So I'm here tonight to announce this year's winner of the Optimists Club Telecommunicator of the Year, and that is Pam McCrery. She'll be getting the award, actual award plaque, tomorrow night at our Optimist Award Ceremony in Harrisonville, so I didn't want to give it to her and take it away again. This award was established to recognize and honor the unsung heroes of emergency services, the men and women who work the communication center and provide a vital link between the citizens of our community, police, fire, and emergency service personnel. I just want to read the nomination, one of the nomination letters we received on Pam's behalf, and that, I think that probably speaks more than I could at this point. Pam has worked for the Raymore Police Department since October 14th, 2009. Although communication officers are sometimes responsible for single acts of commendable performance that deserve recognition, most often it is how they demonstrate their dedication to their profession on a daily basis that is also deserving of our appreciation. The dispatch center must be staffed at all times, day and night, weekends and holidays, 365 days a year. Whenever there is a shift shortage, whether it is due to illness, vacations, or other reasons, Pam can be depended upon to cover shift openings even if it is a call at the last minute. From November 1st, 2012 to October 31st, 2013, Pam has worked almost 500 hours of overtime. It is obvious that Pam cares about her job, the officers she works with, and the citizens of our community. This is displayed in Pam's willingness to give of her own time to support the mission of the Police Department in providing around-the-clock emergency services. Raymore Communications Officers dispatched for the Raymore Police Department, Peculiar Police Department, and the South Metro Fire Protection District during 2013, communication officers answered 9,297 911 calls, 40,891 administrative telephone calls, and dispatched officers and firefighters on over 34,570 incidents. So I would like to take the time to, again, recognize Pam. Thank you for allowing us to come. Pam, would you like to come up here and at least get a handshake? All of you are invited tomorrow night if you'd like to come. Mayor Kirkoff has the details, hopefully.
Yeah, I do have the details. If you need them, I'll email them to you. Thank you. I'm going to have to review the tape to get all those numbers. That's a great number of calls. We'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Berlin?
Thanks, sir. I'll call in the Public Works Director, Mike Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Mr. Mayor, Mayor's Council. It doesn't feel like it outside, but spring is just around the corner. That's leading us up to our construction season. Just to update you on some of our fiscal year 2014 CIP projects. The annual curb replacement project will be advertised later this week. We are starting to work on the, actually, the fiscal year 2013 INI project. That work is taking place in various locations around town. We are finalizing a long-term street preservation project. If you recall, a few years ago, we did a pavement management plan, and last couple of years, we were kind of going year by year. We are in the process of developing a longer-term program with that, and we'll be presenting our recommendations to Mr. Berlin shortly. Along with that, we are also finishing up evaluating the conditions of some of our roadside trails. There's a project this year to do some repairs. We will also, in near future, be presenting recommendations for that to Mr. Berlin as well.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And the only announcement I would have is just to note that Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Westco, and I will be attending the MML Legislative Conference Tuesday, February 11th, and Wednesday, February 12th. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. We have a roundabout welcoming feature committee. Can we get a committee report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, we are still waiting to hear back from the high school. We've approached staff to see if they have the capabilities to do the joint project. And once we hear back from them, we'll move forward or explore alternatives.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda to include Item A, City Council Minutes, January 13th, 2014, and Item B, Acceptance of the 2013 Street Preservation Phase II Project.
Motion. Nope, I'm sorry. We have a motion, and now we have a second. A motion to a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to unfinished business. The second reading of Bill 2931 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2931 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving the final plat for Westbrook at Creekmore, Ninth Plat, lots 261 through 283, and tracks AA, BB, and CC, a subdivision in Section 4 Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2931, the final plat for Westbrook at Creekmore, Ninth Plat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I have the second reading of Bill 2932, Alternate A, by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2932, Alternate A, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri committing the City of Raymore to participate in the Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday in 2014 only.
Thank you. And we have a staff update on that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Kellogg, on first reading, was just asking about the applicability of the sales tax holiday in community improvement districts. We do have a number of community improvement districts in the city, and each one is its own political subdivision, just as the city itself is a political subdivision of the state. So is each one of the community improvement districts a subdivision of the state, as well as transportation development districts that we have in the city. So, in fact, the sales tax holiday, assuming passage by council tonight, would not apply to the tax that's imposed by those community improvement districts. They each have their own board, and each board would have to act affirmatively to participate in that holiday. Each of those boards meets once a year in the fall. Our intention would be to ask them to put permanently the sales tax holiday, both the Show Me Green and also the Back-to-School Sales Tax Holiday that occurs in the summertime, on their agendas each year so that they can consider whether to participate in the holiday, but it is their decision as to whether or not to do so. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Questions of staff? All right. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2932, Alternate A.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2932, Alternate A, the Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday.
Second.
A motion to a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2932, Alternate A. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That completes unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. And the first item of new business requires a public hearing. So, let's see. I'll open the public hearing and ask for the first reading of Bill 2934.
The first reading of Bill 2934 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending various sections of the Unified Development Code of the Raymore City Code.
And a staff report?
Thanks, sir. I'll call in the Community Development Director, Jim Catterett.
Thank you. Bill 2934 proposes the Seventeenth Amendment to our Unified Development Code. As a text amendment to the City Code, this did require a public hearing advertised for this evening. I do need to enter to the record our growth management plan, the Unified Development Code, the notice of publication in the Journal, and the staff report submitted to you this evening. The Seventeenth Amendment comes out of discussion the Planning and Zoning Commission had when we did our annual review of the Unified Development Code. At that particular meeting, they had several items they wanted staff to research, questions that they had. And we conducted the research, went back to the commission in a work session to discuss the items, and the commission did direct staff to prepare the Seventeenth Amendment. And this particular amendment has three, what we consider minor amendments, proposed to the Unified Development Code. The ordinance is broken into three sections. Each section has a separate proposal to amend the code. Section 1 of the bill proposes to establish a new requirement regarding lighting on commercial canopy structures, and specifically canopy structures such as over gasoline pumps and drive-through aisles. Because the commission, over the years, has had concern regarding glare that can come from certain light fixtures that do extend below the bottom of the canopy structure itself. There is a noticeable difference between the lighting fixtures that are flush to the bottom of the canopy and those that extend below. I gave you a couple of photographs of the staff report. The first photograph shows a ledge cover that would be flushed to the bottom of the canopy structure. And this is what the city would propose as the new requirement for lighting structures. The second photograph shows a lighting fixture that actually extends below the canopy, and these are the fixtures that do create some issues of glare. This particular amendment, of course, would not apply to any existing canopies. All existing canopies that have light fixtures that extend below the bottom of the canopy would be non-conforming, would be allowed to remain. If they remove the structure, then any new structure would have to comply with the City Code. We have a number of structures that do comply. We have a number that do not within the city. Section 2 of the ordinance is a clarification of our requirements regarding sidewalk and undeveloped lots. We've had a lot of discussion on this particular topic lately. This is a clarification regarding quarter lots. And if a quarter lot happens to have one of its street frontage that is triggered by the new requirement of having sidewalk installed, this revision would clarify that the sidewalk needs to be installed on the entire lot, not just the side that was triggered. If we did not have that particular provision added to our code, then we could, in essence, create a gap in the future for the other street because the sidewalk wasn't installed in this lot. So the intent always was to have the sidewalk installed on the entire lot. We just want to make sure that's clear in our code. So that's the second proposed revision. And then Section 3 of the bill is a proposal to modify how we, as a city, handle permits for inflatable signs. We adopted this requirement a number of years ago. We adopted the UDC, that if somebody wants to utilize an inflatable sign, they have to go through Planning Commission with the recommendation to City Council. It's a fairly onerous process, and we've had a total of five permits issued. They've all gone through unanimously. We haven't had issues of concerns with any of the inflatable signs that have been installed. So what we'd like to do is simplify the process and allow the Planning Commission to have responsibility for approving the request and then monitoring the request. We would eliminate the proposal that those requests have to come to City Council. So those are the three proposals under this bill for the Seventeenth Amendment. The commission did submit findings of fact for your consideration, and at their January 7th meeting, they voted seven to one to accept the findings and forward this case to council with the recommendation of approval. And I did include the minutes from that meeting for your consideration. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Abdellgawad?
I just have a quick question about the canopy lighting. I know in the past, as a council, we've kind of been hesitant to add additional costs to people bringing new business to town. So do you have an estimated cost difference between the lights that they could use now versus the ones that would be required in the future?
I don't. I don't know what the exact cost would be. I think, again, if the business knows what the requirement is upfront, it's easy to plan for that upfront. We don't want to make anybody retrofit an existing structure. I can't say the new facilities that have been coming in have been flush. It's a fairly common requirement now within communities to have, to make that requirement. So I think businesses, you know, Sam's Clubs was the most recent. They're used to that requirement. That's what they provided. They didn't have to, but that's what they provided. I can't tell you the exact difference in cost, but again, if the business knows upfront that that's the requirement, then they can plan for that.
Other questions of staff? All right, this does require a public hearing, which is open. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to under five minutes. Seeing nobody coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2934.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2934, the Seventeenth Amendment to the Unified Development Code.
Second.
A motion to a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2934. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hubach?
I have a question for our attorney. It's my understanding that every ordinance can only cover one subject matter and not two or more. And in this case, we have lighting canopy, and we also have sidewalks. And I'm wondering if they shouldn't be given to us in two separate ordinances rather than in one, because we're talking about two different subject matters in one ordinance.
Staff has prepared it as being one amendment to the Unified Development Code with three separate sections. We don't have to have, in my opinion, a separate ordinance on each section since the subject is amendment of the Unified Development Code.
Other questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, I guess what I'm saying is we could be opposed to one and not opposed in favor of the other, and that's the reason that I'm asking about that, because we might be opposed, say, for instance, to canopy, because it does affect some people, but we might not be opposed to the sidewalk. That was where I'm coming from.
If that is the instance, Councilmember Hubach, you could move to amend, then have something removed if that's what you think's appropriate.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2934. All in favor? Leave your hands up for just a bit. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to Bill 2935, the first reading of Bill 2935 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2935 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending various sections of the Unified Development Code of the Raymore City Code.
And this too requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thanks, sir. I'll call in Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Bill 2935 proposes the Eighteenth Amendment to the Unified Development Code. This amendment came out of the January 7th meeting when the Planning Commission was discussing the research items the staff had. And similar to what Councilmember Hubach's comments were, the Planning Commission wanted to divide out the Eighteenth Amendment topic from what they considered the more minor amendments in the Seventeenth Amendment. So this is a separate bill, but it does propose to amend the Unified Development Code. And as such, we did advertise the public hearing for this evening. Need to enter to the record the growth management plan, the Unified Development Code, the notice of publication in the Journal, and the staff report submitted to you this evening. The Eighteenth Amendment consists of three proposed changes to sections within the Unified Development Code. They all relate to allowing accessory dwellings as a permitted use in our agricultural, rural estate, and rural residential zoning districts. The Section 1 of the proposed ordinance would allow the accessory dwelling to be located on property that is one acre in size or larger. If it's placed upon those lots in the, again, the three zoning districts, agricultural, rural, state, and rural residential, they would be allowed as a permitted use within those zoning districts. Accessory dwellings would not be allowed within any other residential dwelling district in the city. So the commission felt that this particular use would be allowable and appropriate for property that had some size where the pure size of the lot could absorb the second dwelling unit if it was a detached dwelling unit. Section 2 of the bill establishes the requirements under which the accessory dwelling can then be established. This provides the development standards, the bulk standards, if you would, that would regulate the dwelling unit itself. And Section 3 of the proposed bill establishes the definition of accessory dwelling in our definition section of our code. The commission did submit proposed findings of fact. In your staff report, in the E-Packet, I inadvertently put in the finding of fact from the Seventeenth Amendment. So I have placed at your desk the actual findings of fact from the commission for the Eighteenth Amendment. So I would want those included and considered as part of your review this evening. The commission did, at its January 7th meeting, vote seven to one to forward this proposal to the City Council with the recommendation of approval. And I included a couple of other documents that the commission had looked at and discussed previously about this particular topic. They had a lot of discussion about accessory dwelling. It is something that they had some interest in for a number of years. And so I included some of the background information that they utilized in coming to their decision to allow accessory dwellings within the city. I also included the minutes from the January 7th meeting where there was some discussion on this topic. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Stevens?
I was noticing on page 100, Item 8, that seemed to be very oddly worded. I'm not sure really what that means.
The interest here was to ensure that on a property that has an accessory dwelling unit, that the actual property owner has to reside in either of the units, either the primary unit or the accessory unit. What we didn't want to have happen was a property owner not living on the property and, in essence, renting out both structures. So we felt the property owner needed to live on the property in order to allow the accessory use on the property.
It was just kind of unclear. I just wonder if we could reword that to make it a little more clear.
Councilmember Westco?
Is there a requirement for the appearance of the accessory structures? And I know that they have to meet certain requirements according to Dwelling Code. I just want to make sure that there's something in place to keep somebody from, you know, setting up, you know, some type of ranchackle barn or, you know, an old dilapidated trailer and dropping it on a lot.
There's, other than the Building Code and Property Maintenance Code provisions for exterior structures and maintenance of exterior structures, the commission did not add any specific design elements for the appearance of the structure. We had discussion, not directly related to this topic, but we have had discussion on building design for accessory buildings in general, because there was some interest when we did our annual review of ensuring that detached buildings, garages, maybe larger sheds, had some similarity to the principal home, whether it's the design, roof type, color, materials. The commission did not want to do that for accessory buildings in general, and they did not want to do that for accessory dwelling units as far as making sure the accessory building has a similar appearance. However, again, the general codes of the city do dictate generally materials that can be used and maintenance and how it was constructed. So the accessory building still has to comply with all of our One and Two Family Dwelling Code requirements. If this is an accessory dwelling unit, it has to have all the provisions just like a standard dwelling unit would have. So we feel that the existing codes in place do provide the protection level that we need for the accessory dwelling unit. But do keep in mind, if I can, accessory dwelling units could be part of the existing home where they separate out and actually have two totally separate living areas. They could add to the existing home, or it could be an entirely separate structure. And again, if it's an entirely separate structure or even in addition, it still has to comply with all the code provisions that we have for dwelling units.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Piffo?
Yes, does zoning prevent rental of this kind of a property?
It does not. It would not prevent rental. The intent of the ordinance is, again, to try to allow established the accessory dwelling unit for mother-law quarters, care of elderly, care of young children. However, it is not a specific requirement. So it could, there is the opportunity that the structure could be rented out at some point, yes, to non-family-related members, just rent it out as you would rent out an apartment. That is a possibility. This code does not prevent that. And there's very specific reasons why you don't want to get into that. That becomes very difficult to enforce when you try to start, you know, determining who's living in which dwelling units, et cetera. Most communities do not regulate that as one of the parameters of accessory dwelling units. You either decide you're going to allow the accessory unit or you decide you're not going to allow it. But they, most sources indicate you don't want to regulate who lives in the unit.
Councilmember Westco?
Two questions. The first is, are we receiving applications that are kind of driving this change?
We have not received any applications, but we have received a lot of inquiries over the years where individuals have looked at options they would have for taking care of. And in most cases, it's taking care of an elderly parent. They wanted to see, can they bring in a separate unit? What can they do to allow that individual to reside on their property?
And then the second question is, if it has to comply with all the codes, I assume they have to have running water and electricity. Do they have their separate meters, or do they tie into the primary resident?
A good question. Yeah, very much have to be separated out. So if they bring in a second building or have attached to the existing home, both units have to have separate water and sewer services so they can be independent of one another.
Other questions? Okay. This requires a public hearing, which I've opened. So the floor is open for any public comment. If you'd like to speak, come forward, state your name for the record, and keep your comments to under five minutes. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to dispose of 2936.
2935?
Did I get the wrong, you're right. 2935. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2935, the Eighteenth Amendment to the Unified Development Code.
Second.
A motion to a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2935. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Morehead?
Yes. Based on the question that was asked about the rental ability, that's something that I actually didn't think about, actually, when I was looking into this before tonight's meeting. I guess I would just like to vocalize, I think this would be something that I would like to throw out or encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to possibly explore and analyze if this does, in fact, pass.
Other comments? Councilmember Hubach?
I see this as an aging issue, and I'm very much in favor of this. I just wish they wouldn't call them granny flats, because it'd call something else. But when I've been out carrying petitions, I have come across many, many homes where there's multiple generations living in the same house. Some of them in the basement, some of them in the upper floor, and some of them on the center floor, first floor. And I think the idea that they could have a separate residence is very worthwhile, and I would hope the council would approve it.
Other comments? Councilmember Westco?
You know, I think having the separate residence for caring of the elderly or for people who are not able to care for themselves is very noble. But I would hazard to guess that most people who do this have alternative purposes behind it, meaning the rental income. I could see that happening more as opposed to the other. I'm not necessarily opposed to this. It's just, I think it's a very slippery slope that, once we start down, it can deteriorate rather quickly.
Councilmember Abdellgawad?
I agree with Ms. Hubach and disagree with Mr. Westco. I think that this is something that came up in our city goal-setting session, something that we have a need to look at wider ranges of housing opportunities in Raymore. I'm happy to see that Mr. Catterett and the Planning and Zoning Committee have moved forward on this, and I support it.
The comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2935. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposition? We have six in favor, one in opposition. The first reading passes. We'll move on now to Bill 2936, the first reading of Bill 2936 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2936 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending certain sections of Chapter 610, Peddlers and Solicitors, pertaining to revocation of licenses and permits.
A staff report?
Thanks, sir. The City Council works-
Thank you, sir. At the city council work session on December 16th, 2013, Councilmember Kellogg asked for a review of the procedure outlined in the city code for revoking a peddler's or solicitor's license. An ordinance making some changes has been prepared for council consideration. In the current code, the chief of police determines whether to issue a permit, and in the event that the chief of police denies that application, then the applicant may appeal the denial to the city manager and thereafter the city council. But with regard to revoking a permit, that is put in the hands of the mayor, not the chief of police, and there is no provision for appeal. So, the proposed ordinance would place revocation in the hands of the chief of police, as is the case with issuing a permit, rather than the mayor, and would provide for an appeal of a revocation to the city manager and thereafter the council. Right now, no appeal provision exists. So, that is the effect of the ordinance that's before you.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2936.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2936, the procedure for the revocation of peddlers and solicitors licenses.
Second.
A motion to the second to approve the first reading of Bill 2936. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And that takes care of new business. We'll move on to public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to under five minutes. Okay, seeing nobody come forward, we'll close the public comments. I move to mayor, council, communication, using my nifty, random list of names here this evening. We will begin with Councilmember Pipo.
No random comment.
Councilmember Boehner?
No comment.
Councilmember Kellogg is not here, so Councilmember Hubak?
No comment.
Wow. Councilmember Abdelquad, there's, nothing has been said. It's not like your last.
I might have to stop the streak. I'm sorry. I have to congratulate Pam McCurry from the Police Department for getting telecommunicator of the year. I personally have watched the men and women down there, and I know they work really hard. And so, to get that is quite an honor. And, as I said, they all work hard, but congratulations to Pam. And just because it's now less than six months away, I probably should start getting some people involved in Relay for Life. So, if you haven't looked it up online yet, Raypack Relay for Life is coming up in June. And I encourage everyone, the city staff, maybe the council, to work together and get a team, or work with your family and friends and get a team. It's a great event. The way Relay for Life works is you get a team together for 12 hours from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. For the young people, the old people leave before that. But I'm one of the old people. When I started, I said, no way am I being there all night. Anyway, and so, someone from your team is walking the entire 12 hours or for as long as your team wants to participate. You raise money for the American Cancer Society. It's kind of like a great big party on the football field down at the high school. They serve food, they have games, they have entertainment, music. And so, it's a great time, just walk in some labs, some people ran, taking turns with your family, visiting with people, and all for a great purpose. So, I, if I can take over the polar plunge challenge, I challenge everyone up here and out there also to take a look at the Raypack Relay for Life online and get your team signed up.
Thank you. Councilmember Morehead?
Well, first of all, Councilmember Abdelquad, I would, I guess I would ask, and how cold will it be during? That is the selling point for me.
It's in June. It's not cold.
Fair enough. Fair enough. I want to also express my appreciation and applause for Ms. McCurry, as well as all the other dispatch staff downstairs who make a vital contribution for our community. I do have to comment to Councilmember Hubak, it's not just granny flats. My 16-year-old would love to move me into the backyard any day, so that is a possibility too, which I fear. But, and then, the final point I'd like to make is, actually, I should have brought up under staff reports, Mr. Berlin, a number, I think back in November, there was a discussion that, or a request to talk about the acoustics here in this room. And I didn't know if we were, if that was coming up on a nearby work session.
Very soon. We're not quite finished with our discussions with the vendor, but we will be bringing it forward as soon as we finish that.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Westco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to participate in the polar plunge, and everybody who braved the water is wearing green shirts up on the dais.
Nope, mine's red. I'm sorry.
Now, in my fellow councilman's defense, he was providing service to the community. He was working with the Boy Scouts this weekend, so he was participating in community activity. Currently, the totals stand at Lee Summit, the school of Lee Summit had raised a little over 11,000. Raypack was over 10,600, and Belton was at 8,800. Now, that was just their online totals, so more came in the day of. So, it'll be interesting to see what the final total was, and all the money goes for Special Olympics, so it's a great cause. You know, I noticed that there was a group representing the Kansas City Police Department, and there was a group representing the Cass County Sheriff's Department. I did not see anybody from Raymore PD. I don't know if there was a team, but if not, I'd like to challenge them to get a team for this next, this next year so that the City of Raymore is well represented. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
No comments tonight.
All right. Yeah, sure. I normally get to say, all the good comments were taken, but there wasn't that many comments this evening. But I will mention the Communication Center down the lower portion here at City Hall. If you want to see a truly state-of-the-art emergency dispatch and communication center, take a look at the one we have here at City Hall. Now, if you want to look at that, one of the best ways to get, to view that thing is to join the Citizens Police Academy, which I believe is in March, begins in March?
I would like to start the first part of April.
First part of April. Okay.
I think it's March.
Okay. All right. It'll start in April. It goes for six or eight weeks. I can't remember which, eight weeks. It's well worth the effort to attend. There's, I learned a lot when I attended it. There may be some councilmembers attending the next Citizens Police Academy, but no matter what, you get to see the Communication Center downstairs if you go to the academy. I'll entertain a motion, then, to go into executive session for personnel matters as authorized by 610.0213.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters as authorized by 610.021, paragraph three.
We have a roll call. Vote?
Councilmember Abdel-
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get a second. I'm sorry.
Second.
I did that twice tonight.
Councilmember Abdelquad?
Yes.
Councilmember Boehner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubak?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg absent. Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Pipo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Westco?
Yes.
We will retire to executive session. We will return only to adjourn the main meeting. Thank you, everyone.